Very good. Welcome, everyone, to the February 8th meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Barrington. Due to the RSA 91A emergency provisions, I find as Chairperson of the Select Board that due to this state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone, with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We're utilizing Microsoft Teams for this electronic meeting. All members of the Select Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in this meeting. Phone participation can take place by dialing 1-603-664-0240, and entering conference IDs 76749973, or hashtag. Video participation can take place by typing in BIT.LY backslash capital B A R R capital S capital B. We're providing public notice and necessary information for accessing the meeting. We've previously given this notice on the town website at www.barrington.nuhamshire.gov, and we've included instructions on how to access the meeting. We're providing this mechanism for the public to alert us that any time during the meeting, if you have problems with access, you may write to Administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov, or dial 603-664-0146. Should the public have trouble participating in the meeting, accessing the meeting, the meeting would be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting with a roll call attendance, beginning with Select Person Eyre.
Daniel Eyre, 334 Old Concord Turnpike. I'm here by myself, no one wants to my vote.
George Bailey, 19 Tesley Drive. I'm in my office right now. My wife is in the house downstairs, and there will be no one here to influence my vote.
Andy Knapp, 96 Lindsay Point Road. And I am in the house with my wife, my son, and the dog. And I am locked into one of the bedrooms.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I'm home alone with my dogs.
Tracy Hardikoff, 48 Stone Farm Drive. I am home with my husband, my grown son, and my dog. I will be locking them in another room, and no one will be influencing my vote. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. I think that's my second or third Pledge of Allegiance today. I'm feeling very patriotic. Okay. We have a public hearing tonight on the issuance of a building permit on Long Shores Drive, a private road, for Thomas and Cheryl Rowe and Amy Morrell, map 101, lot 37. There's been additional information provided by Department Heads and Planning Board. And in our notes, there are eight additional requirements of this. One of them being maintaining redundant erosion control on the downhill side of the lower limits of construction. The second being maintaining a much existing forward... Oh, maintain as much existing forward, I assume this is material, it says Matt, as possible to protect wetland. The other is the driveway should be graded to drain entirely to the front yard. The applicant is being asked to consider current or future potential for culvert to drain the front yard located in the area of a right angle turn of the driveway toward the house. This single point of outfall would promote effective runoff and erosion protection. The fifth is maintain a minimum of five feet of undisturbed buffer on both sides to prevent runoff onto adjacent properties. Number six was to grade the section of the road along frontage upon completion to improve the poorly graded gravel and ruts, pardon me, and join the local road association. And finally, number eight, maintain level areas along the edge of Long Shores Drive to safely park two vehicles off the road. Before I ask the Select Board if they'd like to consider authorizing the issuance of a building permit for map 101, lot 37. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this issue? If you would, please mouse over your screen, and in the upper right-hand corner, click on the little hand icon. You can also unmute yourself by pressing star six on your phone, pause for a moment, begin speaking. You can email Administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov, and in sheer desperation can dial 664-0146 to alert us that you'd like to speak. Is there anyone who would like to speak during this public hearing?
Don't see anything coming through so far. I just want to point out I made a mistake on number two. Instead of forward, that's supposed to say forest. So existing forest, Matt. I apologize for that. It's correct in the packet, but not in my town administrative report, so I apologize. But maintain as much existing forest, Matt, as possible.
And I thought it was forward material. That's what I get for interpreting your...
Mistake?
Yeah. Interpretating, interpreting. Your mistake.
I see no comments.
No comments. Okay. So the Select Board is being asked to consider authorizing the issuance of the building permit. Questions, comments, concerns? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. My first request, Madam Chair, would be is that on some of the documents that have there, I think it might be Pike 6 on the size of the letters. I do have one of these that I use, but it doesn't always make the letters available for me to read. So if you could maybe in the future ask the individuals to make these a little bit bigger so I could read them, I'd sure appreciate it. The second issue I have is that on this piece of property that's come forward with us, I would... I really am not in favor of approving this, because I'm talking personally about myself to lot 37. But it's the fact that with my prior experience on the ZVA and what have you, in the past, we have allowed certain things to slide as far as documents that have been required. And I can speak of eight times in about 15, 16 years that the ZVA was burnt because the individual said, "Well, no, we meant this." So what I'm talking about here is on the application for private roads. There's an item here on item three, and it says, "Copy of plot plan showing location and size of lot, location of all proposed structures with setbacks, locations, length of driveway, and the relationship of the lot to a Class 5 private road and/or the Class 5 road that provides access." And what happens is that that is not in the documentation. But in order for me to step forward and turn around and approve this, I would like to ask whoever turns around and makes an amendment for approval that this be set forth at the building inspector or the building agent or the building official, however we document it. We give him the final authority for approval of this, provided they provide him with that document which they need in order to get the building permit issued from him. Did I make myself clear, Madam Chair, or is there anything that you would like to ask questions of me to go over?
I just... So you're asking that if this is approved, that number nine be added, that the town code enforcement officer not approve the building permit until what is displayed?
A copy of the plot plan showing location and size of lot, location of all the proposed structures with setbacks, location. It's item three on the application that they picked up either online or at the place to do. So I'm willing to shorten our stay on doing this, provided this here, and let John have the final say, because they do have to present this to John in order to get it. So it'll be automatically brought in anyway. But it's to be a stipulation to go with what we already have.
Because you feel like on page five, the hand-drawn one is not appropriate?
No, ma'am, it is not. It doesn't follow through with what was being asked. That's why I did it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Andy, I see your hand up. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Yes, I was trying to figure out what George was saying was missing or incomplete, because looking at the drawing, there's a very surveying engine, an engineering plot plan there.
Andy, that's only for the septic... That's only for the septic system, though.
Shows the layout of the house and the driveway.
In the upper right-hand corner of page five, the plot plan shows the sample plan.
Yes, it does, but it does not follow number three on the application itself that we make men that this prior, a prior board voted to approve. That's the only reason why I put the stipulation in there. It doesn't show all the dimensions and everything else on there, Andy. That's the reason why I went ahead and said, "We'll do it this way here," and then I will not be one to hold it. Even though they have a rough hand drawing in the bottom, it doesn't show the difference for the septic system or anything else on there. It's not a complete drawing. And that's the reason why I put that stipulation in there, to allow them to get started in whenever, whether they decide to start. At least they'll have the okay. And John will have the final say, because he'll have to make sure that the house is built that way anyway.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to issue the building permit? I have a motion from Select Person Bailey with the following caveat, that the code enforcement officer not approve the building permit until a copy of a plot plan showing setbacks be attached, correct?
Correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Eyre, please.
Eyre abstain.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
Article five, the motion carries. Thank you.
Could I get clarification of what I'm supposed to get? I'm missing something.
That's John Hawkins.
John, John, when they come in, John, to ask you for a building permit, they're supposed to bring in a map to you, a plot plan to you, showing the location and size of everything else. It's just something they have to bring with them in order to do it. On your, on your application form, you have a list of things that they have to bring. And that so happens to be one of the ones that they're supposed to bring to us to get a building permit approved by the Select Board. And so I'm just putting it all on you, is that you make sure that you have that draw... You have to have that drawn before you issue a building permit, so it just slides right in there, then that way there, they can go right ahead and continue on instead of asking them to come back in a couple of weeks with that drawing or what have you. Just puts it right there, and we can get it issued and move right along.
So you're looking for a combination of what's in the upper right-hand corner and what's hand-drawn?
Yes, ma'am.
You want all of one plan. You can't do two plans like they're doing. It has to be on one plan. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
I've always looked at, I got a plan, and then I got a close-up, and I didn't have an issue with it. But you want it all on one plan, is what you're saying. It can't be two plans where you use the two, the close-up and the main plan.
Well, they don't... John, the reason why I say on this one here, there are the two plans, all the dimensions are not forthcoming on the thing, on the plan. And the way, the way your application is printed, you can either, it doesn't say whether one plan or not, John, but just all the dimensions have to be there, but they weren't presented to us.
Hi. Okay. I'm not following, but I'll find out.
Well, if maybe I can swing by and just talk to you later on, if that's acceptable to the Chair.
I'm comfortable with that. Is the rest of the Select Board comfortable with that?
Fine with it.
Consensus? Jim?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to appointments, it appears to me there are no appointments in today's meeting, so we'll move on to the first public comment. Public comments are limited to a total of 15 minutes, three minutes per person. If you'd like to speak, please adopt the same actions that we mentioned earlier. Mouse over your screen, click on the icon in the upper right-hand corner that looks like a hand. Call 664-0146. Unmute your phone by pressing star six, pausing for a moment, and speaking to alert us that you would like to issue public comment. Your other option is to email Administration@barrington.nuhamshire.gov quickly. I see a GJ with a hand raised. Go ahead.
GJ would be Chief Joy, sorry. Just wanted to take a moment to let the public know. We put it out on Facebook, but I wanted to take a moment on this forum. The body cameras are in service at this point in time. So one of the changes you'll have in your contacts with us is you'll be meeting officers that are announcing that you are being audio and video recorded. That is legitimate. It's something we've obviously been in the works for in excess of a year, and they are online and in service at this time.
Excellent. I did see that.
Really nice.
Thank you, Chief Joy. Any other public comments? I'll give it 30 seconds. Okay. Seeing as there are no other requests for public comment, we will move on to review and acceptance of the meeting minutes. Let's begin with the... Hang on one second. January 25th, meeting minutes? Go ahead.
Still move to approve?
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Bye, Vice Chair Knapp. Roll call vote, beginning with Select Person Eyre, please.
Eyre, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. That motion carries. Next is the Select Board minutes from our deliberative session on Saturday, January 30th. Any changes, comments, questions, concerns? And if not, I will entertain a motion to accept. Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of January 30th, 2021.
Very good.
Gotcha.
Who was that? Oh.
I second the motion.
Yep. Vice Chair Knapp, seconds. Roll call vote, please, beginning with... Select Person Eyre.
Eyre, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
And Hardikoff, aye. Thank you all. Up next is staff report by our town administrator, MacGyver. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Only one thing that's not on the agenda, but later on in my report, which is our February work anniversaries at the first meeting here in February. Remarkably, all three work anniversaries are in the police department. Popular hiring month in the police department is February. Maybe it's police officers like to make a clean break at the end of the calendar year, and after a hiring process, they're brought on in February. Who knows?
It could be Valentine's Day.
It could be Valentine's Day, too. There's a lot of love in the police department. So Spencer Abi, who currently serves as a detective, is celebrating his third year in the town of Barrington. Tyler Courier, his second year. And our deputy chief, Daniel Brooks, is celebrating his first year in Barrington.
Excellent. Well, hats off to all of them. That's terrific. And then municipal office administrator, Cottle.
Good evening.
Tiffany.
Tiffany, we've lost you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. We can. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Documents previously submitted for signature and pending are payroll manifest 2021 105, AP manifest 2021 206, and one abatement request following mediation. And then newly submitted are going to be the meeting minutes that were just approved for January 25th and 30th. And then we have land use change tax warrants and bills for five different properties, and one additional abatement request following mediation. That's what we have.
Okay, very good. Thank you. We'll be on the lookout for those documents. Go ahead, Select Person Eyre.
I mean, wet signatures?
None of these need to be wet signatures. They can all be electronic.
Good question. Up next, old business, COVID-19 screening, exclusion, and travel policy. Connor has done an update from an almost year-old policy, or an eight-month-old policy. Connor, you want to tell us the fundamental changes in this policy, please?
Yes, really, it's an expansion following current guidance. In the footer of the document, you'll see a link to the New Hampshire Bureau of Infectious Infections Disease Control Guidance, which was the platform for this updated policy. It expands beyond just a travel policy to cover screening and exclusion. So in practice, a lot of the questions and concerns that are raised on a day-to-day basis regarding the coronavirus and reporting to work have to do with exposures and symptoms, at what point employees need to quarantine, at what point they need to isolate, and what those protocols are. And so we've, we have always been following the prevailing health guidance, but I think it's beneficial to employees and supervisors to have it codified in a policy to make it clear what the expectations of employees are, and to help promote the health and safety of employees and residents. So the, all of the guidance items, like I said, are most up to date. And now, if this is adopted as a policy, we'll make sure to be responsive to any changes. One of the bigger changes that happened was the guidelines bringing the quarantine from 14 days to 10 days. And again, quarantine is separate than isolation. It's itemized separately in here, but that's consistent with the prevailing guidance. The screening questions obviously help check for possible symptoms, and then close contact, and then travel. So finally, the last sec... So the second to last section is the exceptions to quarantine requirements. This reflects current guidance considering the vaccine. As long as somebody is more than 14 days past their second dose of vaccine, they are exempted from the policy. And then persons who are within 90 days, so within three months of somebody testing positive for the coronavirus, they are also exempt. I guess there's just not enough data at this point to know if somebody can contract the virus again after the three months. Finally, for emergency personnel designated as essential employees, there's a list of criteria that would have to be met to allow those folks to report to work for their essential functions. The second, the last section is earned time and compensation, which makes it clear what the expectations are for use of time, given these circumstances. So, you know, again, a number of years ago, the town consolidated the sick time and vacation time into earned time. It makes it clear in the personnel policy that employees are expected to carry a balance of at least two weeks to carry themselves during any sick time. The town is very generous with their earned time and time away policy. And I think the expectation, given no federal laws requiring otherwise, as we experienced last year, of employees to use their time for their quarantine or isolation is reasonable. The only two caveats I'll make to that is if an employee is exposed at work, they would be eligible for workers' compensation. And our short-term disability benefits cover an employee after the eight-day waiting period, should they be sick for longer than that. But both of those benefits pay at a fraction of regular wages.
Very good. Any questions, comments, or concerns in reference to the policy? Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Yes, my, my, my comment on it, on it was looking at the COVID-19 travel policy. I talked with Connor a little bit about it before. The, the term referring to it is an emerging health crisis. I think we're beyond emerging at this point, which Connor and I were chatting about. I also said that where it says, "We are implementing the following protocols," we have implemented the following protocols. And then down in number two, under personal travel, it specifically states a minimum of 14 days, but in the...
Andy, I don't mean to cut you off, but this is the old, this is the old policy that this policy is replacing.
Oh, okay. I thought one of them was employee signature, like the employee signed for it, that they're going, "Oh, it still is. It's just that..." Okay. Never mind then. I'm, I'm, I was doubling it up, saying, "You made the corrections in one, but the one that employees sign is different, not..." Yeah, I'll just shut up.
Okay, so I find that, I find that the new policy is much more comprehensive and explains in detail responsibilities, both of the supervisor and the employee. And any exception to this policy would be brought before the Select Board, which I also agree with. So do I have a motion for acceptance of the newly expanded and updated policy? I have a motion by Vice Chair Knapp, and a second by, was that Jim?
Yep.
By Select Person Sikosha. So roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Eyre.
Eyre, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sikosha, aye.
Hardikoff, aye. Motion carries. Thank you for writing a very good policy. Under old business, 2021 deliberative session review ballot session information. Go ahead, Connor.
Just really quick, for the community's benefit, very successful deliberative session on January 30th. Thanks for all those that attended and watched virtually, or watched recording afterwards. There is one change to a petition warrant article. Other than that, the ballot will represent the warrant articles as presented throughout the process. The ballot session is on March 9th, which will take place at the middle school with all of the health and safety protocols, which we implemented and refined throughout the four elections, or really, three COVID-related elections in 2020. And if anybody has additional questions regarding voting, please don't hesitate to reach out to the town. I've also included that 2021 warrant page, which is very well organized, description of everything to be voted on, and a link to the YouTube channel where the deliberative session recording is. That is all. Thank you.
Very good. And a thank you to our town moderator, Ron St. Jean. He did an excellent job with moderating the session. I appreciated how fast we moved through. Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you. I, I want everybody to know that I think that this deliberative session really was straightforward, key on the point, and everything was just, it was right there. It just showed that with the help of everybody, staff, Connor, and everybody else that, you know, just kept us right on point, and we moved right on down the road. I couldn't say what a, it just made, made all of us just look like, like we always do. Powerful, smart, ready to go, cheerful. Thank you.
Yeah, I thought it went very well.
I don't know what the other seven are.
So under new business, you're being asked to consider setting goals for the Select Board and bringing any suggested goals to the February 22nd meeting. And you can certainly email them ahead of time to Connor should you have ideas or subject areas that you find are very important. You know, certainly, the new town hall will repeat. You always go back and look at your strategic plans and say, "What's been accomplished, what hasn't?" And since we're still working on that, that will certainly stay. But please send off emails to Connor on specific subject areas or goal ideas that you may have. Up next is the updated police cruiser replacement proposal. Some very thoughtful information was sent out to all of us. Connor, is it our intention to have our police chief present on this updated replacement proposal?
He can certainly give an overview, or if the board members have had a chance to review the information, he can just be available for questions. It's the board's preference.
I prefer questions.
You prefer he be available for questions. Anyone else? Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Sorry.
Questions?
Yes.
Okay. So I will just entertain any questions on the updated police cruiser replacement proposal above and beyond what you've got in front of you and have read. Go ahead, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much. After reading through it, I want to say it's quite comprehensive. But the question I have is that how much of the old equipment in total dollars worth do we have to spend to update it? Because I noticed that during the statement, it talked about some items were paid for by the insurance company, and, and I didn't finish reading the whole thing to the very end. So that's why I'm just asking for a shortcut right now. What's, what's the cost going to be for the town after the insurance company and everything else is paid for? With the exclusion of the dog food and vet and stuff like that.
Okay, go ahead, Doc, Chief Joy.
So the total that, am I unmuted? Let's check that first.
You're, you're unmuted, sir.
So the total for cruiser and everything that we're going to look for from the town is that 2516625 number. Most of the equipment that I attached is not usable from one cruiser to the next because of body style changes that have gone forward. Items, the patrol PC, mobile data terminal, the radar, those items are usable. Items, the patrol PC, mobile data terminal, the radar, those items are usable, but an item that nobody would think about, such as the mount for the mobile data terminal, will not work going forward into the 2021 cruiser. It'll fit the current Explorer. It's not usable to mount the MDT in the new cruiser. Any lights, anything along those lines won't fit into the new package because of body style changes.
And if I could just add on that, the, our insurance carrier is anything that we can't, any equipment that is still functional, but we can't use, they are reimbursing us for. So the mount for the mobile data terminal that we won't be able to use in a new cruiser because of body changes, our insurance carrier is, is paying for. For equipment that was damaged, they reduce the value based on depreciation. The total depreciated value was $1,000, I think, right around there for the equipment. We're still waiting for all the payments to come through, but just because equipment can't be moved into the new cruiser, doesn't mean that our insurance company isn't paying for it.
Okay. And before I, before I entertain other questions, Chief Joy, are you suggesting you're going to have a vehicle that does not have a computer in it at all?
So that's correct, ma'am. At this point in time, and again, I know it's very convoluted because the K-9 Cruiser got totaled, we already had the 2021 coming in, so that's what K-9 is going to move into. So what essentially this cruiser is going to do is it's going to replace Unit 7. Currently, I am in Unit 7. That is the highest mileage vehicle. It's approximately 115,000 miles on it. Because I am in it, quite frankly, I'm not using a mobile data terminal as much as the patrol officers are using them. One, I still write tickets the old-fashioned way via paper because I'm quicker than I would be on an MDT, and I'm not in the cruiser as much as the guys and girls are doing their work. So it doesn't mean much in my car anyway. We don't have enough MDTs to support all of our vehicles. So this cruiser coming in as presented will replace Unit 7 without an MDT. Down the road, it will get one moved into it as it rotates onto the front line, but for the time being, it won't have one. That's correct.
Okay. And I don't know who raised their hand first, whether it was Vice Chair Knapp or Select Person Air. Do you two know?
Andy, we've got it. Select Person Air.
Well, you're both being very chivalrous. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
All right. So my, my first question really is for Connor, and it's around our, our insurance policy. So we have depreciated costs. We don't have replacement costs?
We have both.
Then, then if we have replacement costs, why would they not replace it at the, at the actual current value for replacement?
So there's basically three categories. The first category is equipment that is damaged and cannot be used. And for, our policy dictates that that equipment that is damaged is depreciated. So the vehicle and equipment that is damaged is depreciated. We get depreciated value for it. The equipment that is, any equipment that is not damaged, but is not able to be moved into a new cruiser, we have full replacement cost for. And any equipment that is usable and usable in the new cruiser would be transferred over. I guess there's kind of a fourth category. Outside of auto, there's our, our property insurance covers some of the equipment in a cruiser. So for example, the K-9 cage in the back, the kennel in the back, was determined to be property and not part of our auto policy. So that's full replacement. They bought new, not, no depreciated value. They paid labor and parts for that. If the computer was damaged, that would be property.
So my, I guess my, my argument or my gripe here from an insurance end is that if we have replacement costs, then them giving us $10,000 for the cruiser, I'm not saying they would buy us a new cruiser, but you can't replace a 2016 Ford SUV for $10,000, especially in a police package. So they're not really doing, they're not doing us a service with what they're giving us, and they're not meeting their, their own insurance guidelines in that regard.
So they separate out, I mean, we'll, we will end up with, I think we did the math, we'll end up with about, between $17,000 and $19,000 from our insurance company for the total cruiser. And so that, the, just the cruiser with no equipment is the 9,650. It's actually 10,650, but they don't reimburse our deductible until they receive payment from the other insurance company. So the total is about 7, $17,000 to $19,000. Where it gets convoluted, and this is what Chief Joy was mentioning, the, the bills that they're paying, the labor for stripping and installing equipment and some of the replacement equipment is going into the replacement K-9 Cruiser. Some of, some of the value, that 4,851, which is a check to us, not paying for equipment that's going in the new cruiser, is reflected in this purchase of the cruiser. So it's really split up between a couple cruisers, if that helps clarify.
Right. But part, when you look at insurance, one of the aspects of insurance is to make us whole for our loss. So obviously parsing it out makes sense, and you're going to parse it out by, by property, which is the, the add-ons and then the vehicle itself. And the add-ons, I don't, I don't necessarily know, they, I mean, they look on relatively on base, I, with what they're doing. I mean, I don't know if the depreciate in the end of it is right without digging further into it, but I feel like they're low on the cruiser replacement, because if we asked the insurance company to go find us a 2016 Ford SUV, I don't know if it would come in, if you could even buy it for what they're reimbursing us for.
So I'd be happy to follow up with them and, and get the specific protocol that they use for valuing the cruiser. You know, they, you know, like any insurance company, they use a third party. George might be, might remember the company, because he, he met with the individual that, that ended up totaling the cruiser and determining the value. But I'm happy to follow up and, and get some more specific information where how they arrived at that value of 10,650.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just, my, I'm just saying, my experience has been where I have had people who have not only hit me and then also dealing with all of my works insurance stuff for vehicles and everything. It takes a little bit of pushing on them, but they usually will follow through and make you whole with the end of it. And I don't feel that they're looking at these numbers that they're making us whole based on that.
Yeah, I mean, we have made a lot of progress, but like I said, I'm certainly happy to take, take that specific concern about the value of the vehicle back to them and share what I learned.
Thank you.
Select Person Air, go ahead.
All right. Did everyone read the questions I sent out?
Yes.
Nope. I was not available to read them today.
Do you want to read them, Dan?
Yes. My first question is, I've had no information about this dog. I didn't know anything. How old is the dog? So I got a birthday of 10, 19.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, point of order, can we stay on the automobile insurance first before we turn around and go on it? Because I still have questions to ask.
I do too, George.
I, I, I want to piggyback on what Andy was saying about the monies.
All right. Well, Andy didn't have the chance to read this.
Okay. One second. Select Person Air, would you defer for just a moment, would you defer for just a moment to allow Select Person Bailey, and then we'll come back? Is that okay?
I'll, I'll come back on that, my questions later.
Okay.
I need, so first of all, reading this information provided to me, the total cost to town will be 8678, 4851 equals 382625. That needs to be corrected. That's, subtracted, it shouldn't have been added, not subtracted. And so going back with insurance company and so, so where, where to blame for this accident then? Where at fault?
No. In, in no way, shape, or form was Officer Morse to blame for this accident. It was investigated by the state police. Officer Morse was struck in his lane near the fog line.
That's, I, I knew that, but it seems like our insurance companies, it's no benefit for us, like Andy stated on, and they're going to go after that other insurance company. They'll get totally reimbursed above and beyond what we will in their, in real life. And I am not in favor of this Dodge Durango, because we were changing body styles from past statements from the chief of our officers feeling comfortable in certain vehicles. Now we're going to outfit a vehicle just for this dog, then now we're stuck with this investment we have, but the next one, we have to go to Durango. And we have no proof our officers will like this Dodge Durango.
Can I step in for a moment?
Yeah.
K-9 Cruiser is going to be the 2021 Ford Explorer. The 2021 Ford Explorer, which has already been ordered, is what is going to be the K-9 vehicle. The Durango is going to be replacing Unit 7, the vehicle that I am currently driving with 115,000 miles on it. Deputy Chief Brooks and I went up to New Durham. The New Durham Police Department has a 2020, I believe, Durango, because they got it last year. We both drove it. Deputy Chief Brooks and I, it would be a pretty good representation between the two of us for the larger officers and the crew. Clearly Sergeant Baker has some size on both of us, but we're a good representation. The cockpit in that vehicle is comparable to the Charger, a little bit bigger, and the transport area in the back for prisoner purposes is much bigger than either the Dodge, the Ford Taurus, or the Ford SUV.
Very good. Do you have any other questions, Select Person Air? Go ahead.
How many officers are assigned a vehicle?
Currently, three officers are assigned a vehicle. That would be myself, the K-9 Cruiser, and Deputy Chief Brooks. Deputy Chief Brooks is in Unit 2, which is the oldest Ford Taurus in the fleet with in excess of 100,000 miles on it.
Any other questions?
And then for past statements made, that I find, ah, change, then plus the stink of the dog, our officers will not use that, so it's going to be designated 110% to the dog only. So, and I, this other last question has to go to the fire chief and the police chief. If it pass, if the budget passes and we do get the UTV for conservation, how do you plan on moving the trailer? I believe the fire truck could be set up, and then will another cruiser be set up for mobilization on that? That's one thing to look forward to, I think, how we utilize that. Because I know the dog, they used like Saturday with my question on another unit. And it seems we should wait for the town vote, see if it passes. Another town's might not pass, there might be vehicles available too. Thank you.
Hey, so before I move on to Select Person Bailey, I want to note that in prior meetings, Chief Joy made it very, very clear that there was a difficult time in ordering very specific vehicles and that the, the time limits on purchasing for the fleet for police vehicles and the availability of certain vehicles was limited. So I recall that taking place, and I, I'm going to assume, and I'll ask, you know, publicly, Chief Joy, you've done your due diligence on both timelines and what's available, correct?
I broke down the order dates in the memo I sent. Based on the conversations we have had, Dodge will no longer be accepting orders for SUVs after April 1st, and that's a hope on our point. For instance, right now Chevy is no longer taking orders for Tahos.
Very good. Okay. I, I remember you specifically speaking to that. I'll come back to you, Select Person Air, because I want you to...
Oh, I think Rick Walker wants to answer my question. One of my questions for the UTV.
Chief Walker, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Hang on. Please humor me for a minute. I don't want to get too far into scope creep. So the one question that Select Person Air has is if, in fact, the police department needed to borrow the U, U off-road vehicle, and they were using a trailer to move it, would, is, is part of the plan that there'll be a vehicle available to move it?
That's correct. As far as I'm concerned, the police will be using it for enforcement, and if they, if they need to use the fire utility to pick up and move it around, I have no issue with that.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Okay. Select Person Bailey, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that Vice Chair and Dan turned around and had some very good comments. If you remember correctly, Madam Chair, I asked earlier of the police chief what our value, what was going to happen to us, and going through his memo that he sent out, he, he finally comes down to say that our cost is going to be $21,340 after the rest of it's all done. Mr. Air brought up a very important point, along with what Andy was saying there, was the fact that we are not held at fault, and with not being at fault, we should not be the one that's stuck paying the difference, because they're going to go after the other insurance company for the total package, and they're going to be made whole, and we're going to be sitting here holding our ears just to, just to keep from hearing the words from all three of us. But I, I'm telling you that I, I think that we are, we're not getting kissed on, on this deal here. So the other words that go with it, stay with it, Madam Chair, to be polite. And I just think that it's there. I know when I had an accident and I very seldom had one that I wasn't at fault, and I had, my insurance company made up all the difference, and that's, and that's what happened. I mean, right here, they're turning around, telling us they're going to give us an allowance of 10, 650, then they're going to take $1,000 away. But we weren't at fault, so why are they taking? So I would, and I also know that Connor's listening to me, so I, I just have to say that these two, the two select persons that made the comments, they need to be looked at and worked at, because I really feel like I'm being asked to do something that I don't want to do, and that's to pay for that extra money with that person that hit us and caused the damage. Their insurance company is responsible. Thank you for listening, Madam Chair, and the rest of the board.
Thank you. Select Person Sakosha.
So two things, you know, we're going to end the whole, you know, well, it's a good way to end the whole trailer thing for the UTV. Depending on what UTV they end up going with, they do 60 miles an hour. If it's going to have lights and sirens on it, you know, we should pass a law in town that that UTV is able to go on the roads, and then we can avoid trailering it and losing time that way if we need to go on a rescue or we need to go looking for somebody that can go directly out on the road. But I would also like to make a motion to accept what Chief Joy has brought to us and in addition, adding to going to our insurance and fighting them tooth and nail to get what we actually need for money.
Here, here.
Because if we, if we wait, we're going to lose out on it, and we're just going to be stuck between a rock and a hard spot, and I don't want to see that happen to us.
Okay. So, well, you're, you're, Andy, you're next, and then Jim, well, I understand you have a motion in place. Before anyone seconds it, I'm going to ask that after Andy, after the Vice Chair speaks, that the town administrator give us the verbiage that needs to happen with that motion. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
I was just curious. What I'm trying to understand is can we get a spec sheet on this 2021 Dodge Durango? Because it comes in a 293 horsepower V6 or a 300-plus horsepower V8. So which one are we getting?
It's the V6.
Correct. It's the V6.
And then, like tow capacity there, the one thing I can, I can tell you guys, looking at it, is it's all-wheel drive as opposed to four-wheel drive. It's, safety rating is effectively garbage at 2 out of 10. And obviously, we know what fuel economy is on an SUV, so that was my other comment on it.
Okay. And I'm going to ask, go ahead, Select Person Air.
I own a Dodge pickup, and the four-wheel drive's locked in all the time, and I constantly, I had a lifetime warranty on it for a little bit, but I was constantly replacing the front end box left and right and so, and it does, it's not good on fuel either.
Okay. So TA MacGyver, the verbiage on the motion that was made needs to read what?
Supporting the police chief's recommendation to purchase a 2021 Dodge Durango with equipment using insurance funds and up to $25,16625 from the Police Outside Detail Revolving Fund. Fund.
Okay.
TA MacGyver, can I stand for a second?
Yes.
Uh, if it's the Board's wish to buy the more expensive Cruiser package, we were trying to do our due diligence and save the town a few thousand dollars. If the Board would prefer we spend the extra money and order a Ford Explorer, I will go that route happily. I believe that the Durango is the better option for price and everything else, but if the Board sees fit, I will certainly spend the extra several thousand dollars to order a Ford.
Does the Board have an opinion, response, or comment in reference to that? Go ahead, um, Select Person Bailey.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Sorry, Dan. Uh, I feel that getting the Dodge Durango after what Andy had said is just, it's a mute point. I think that we're putting individuals out here in the vehicle, and I mean, we just saw what happens with a vehicle, and I don't think we need to put something with a 2 out of 10 for safety rating. I couldn't approve something like that. Thank you.
Okay, um, Select Person Air.
And that is my, one of my statements earlier, I don't, I will not support changing vendors. And I really don't support taking a brand-new vehicle and putting a dog in it, and it's gonna get trashed and stuff. Um, I don't think it's utilized right and stuff. And then-
Dan, I think-
Well, transparency, these numbers are wrong.
Okay, so brought, brought before you at this point is, um, an adaption to what was just motioned, and Select Person Sakoshia, are you willing to change your motion to allow up to an additional $4,000 to purchase the more expensive vehicle?
Yes, uh, to, yes, for the Ford package, yep.
Okay, and do I have a second on that? I have a second by Vice Chair Knapp. I, I, I'm going to ask any other questions, comments, or concerns before we roll with this, and Select Person Air, I'm just gonna speak quickly as a dog lover. I don't care what it takes to protect the dog in the car. It's a, a, a part of the police force, and just like our dogs are part of our family, they deserve to be protected when they're being transported, but that's just one person's humble opinion. Go ahead. Um, any questions, comments, or concerns about the motion in front of you, or do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, I have a second from Vice Chair Knapp. Go ahead, Select Person Air.
I wish I had more information on this. We're putting, we don't know exactly what additional money is up, it's not broken down right, and these numbers are wrong. 86, 78 minus 48, but we're getting reimbursed for that. It does not equal 36, 38, 26, 25. So how can you say the 25 grand's right?
Would you, would you like to bring this back before us on the 22nd with new, uh, figures, or?
I like the table.
Can I finish? Or you have a first and a second for allowing up to $4,000 more for the purchase of the Ford Explorer?
Madam Chair, move the motion.
Okay. Could I have a roll call vote, please, beginning with Select Person Air?
No, this is a joke.
Bailey, aye.
Knapp, aye.
Sakoshia, aye.
And Hardakoff, aye. The motion carries for the amount that was presented with an additional 4,000, up to $4,000 for the purchase of a Ford Explorer replacement vehicle. Thank you for all your work, Chief Joy.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Professional Engineering Services, R.
Oh, Tracy, you muted, you got muted. Uh-oh, you're still-
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, I, it, I don't see your microphone button on, but you can't, I can't hear you.
Can you hear?
Yes, oh.
Oh.
Do you have, um-
You have Bluetooth connection?
Do you have like a Bluetooth connected to your computer or anything?
Can't hear you.
Maybe somebody started a car?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Can you continue to hear me? Because the only other thing I can think of is that-
Oh, no, it just cut out again. You, I think, to get it back on, I think you have to cycle the mute again. Cycle it one more time.
Okay.
There. Oh, no.
It keeps muting you.
It'd be really funny if Andy was doing this on his computer, just to punk us.
Yeah, not me, not me.
We can't, I can't tell if she's talking to us.
Tracy, I think your computer just hit its limit, couldn't take you anymore, it's muting you out. Nope, can't hear you. You can be like me and call in.
I, I'll call her cell phone from the, um, from the meeting.
The hills are alive, but not with the sound of Tracy.
All right, let's see.
Dan, your hand's up.
And George, you're muted.
All right, you should be getting a phone call, Tracy.
Got, got the phone call, thank you.
Great. Weird.
Yeah, I don't, it has to have something to do with the airbeats. Can you discuss the-
Can you mute the speakers on your computer? Do we, did we lose the phone?
Can you discuss the Professional Engineering Services?
Yes.
Prestige worldwide.
Uh, okay, so I just wanted to let the Board know that we received an overwhelming response for the advertisement of Professional Engineering Services. Twelve firms put in for our scope of services, which I think is just tremendous. Um, it gives the Engineering Services Selection Committee a really broad group to review, uh, from small firms to large firms. Um, all of the responses are available on the Town's website. The committee, uh, will begin meeting on Wednesday, the 10th. Uh, will meet weekly for a month, uh, to go through the review process, interview candidates, and prepare a recommendation for the Select Board at the March 8th meeting. Uh, a lot of work to account for that, and, uh, look forward to providing an update at the March 8th meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Flexible spending accounts, let's move on to that.
Yes, so this is a, a federal, uh, so a, a law, um, was passed, uh, at the federal level, allowing, changing the IRS rules, allowing employers to elect to implement changes to their flexible spending account provisions, um, and healthcare, or dependent care account, uh, provisions. So previously, the Town contributed to the, uh, flexible spending accounts of employees that was discontinued with the implementation of the compensation study. So now all flexible spending account dollars and dependent care account dollars are employee dollars, and they're, they're in these accounts. For those familiar with the accounts, um, there's requirements to submit qualifying expenditures, to have the funds released or reimbursed, and typically, at the end of a plan year, one of two things happens. One is that there's a grace period of two and a half months to submit expenditures from the prior plan year, and after those two and a half months, the funds expire, or there's a carryover. Uh, this past plan year, the carryover allowed amount was $550. So for our flexible spending account, uh, we, our current plan allows for a carryover, and for our health, or our dependent care account, um, we have a grace period. So if the Town elects to adopt the provisions of the federal law, the, uh, for the flexible spending account, it would allow a carryover limit to be unlimited, which would essentially mean up to $2,750, again, of employees' money that employees have contributed, and for the health, or the dependent care account, excuse me, for the dependent care account, um, it would allow for essentially an additional 12 months of grace period for submitting expenditures. So there's no additional cost to the Town. When a flexible spending account, um, is, when there's money forfeited, that goes to the Town, um, so they're, you know, extending the limit to unlimited, uh, would mean that we wouldn't receive any revenue, um, which is generally between a couple hundred and a few thousand dollars, um, certainly not something that we count on, and again, it's employees' money. So, uh, my recommendation is this, that the Select Board, uh, consider adopting the increased carryover limit and extended grace period for the July 2020 to July 2021 plan year.
Is that unlimited?
It's unlimited for the flexible spending account.
Thank you.
So, Connor? Uh, my big questions were, how many people are affected by this?
So I appreciate your questions. I sent out an email not long before the meeting, um, and so you asked great questions. Uh, we currently have, uh, 23 employees enrolled in the flexible spending account, and as it stands right now, six are on pace to have more than 550. I think that feedback is you, Tracy.
My phone's muted.
Keep your phone unmuted, but mute your computer. Like, take your volume off on your computer. I had the same problem, I did the same thing you did, didn't work.
I'm actually getting the feedback, you're my, you're, um, phone, Andy.
Sounds like a submarine underwater.
Wait, no, there's somebody else. No, it is Tracy. Yeah, Tracy, mute your, oh, here, I'm gonna mute your-
George, you have flashbacks on me, or what?
All right, I apologize, folks. Andy, um, okay, you did unmute yourself. I think I resolved it.
Okay, I'm unmuted.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, and I don't hear it anymore. I think, um, I think it's taken care of. So, uh, Tracy asked some great questions. The answers to her questions were, how many employees have a flexible spending account? It's 23. How many have dependent care accounts? It's two. How many with the flexible spending accounts are on track to be over 550 at the end of the plan year? Currently, there are six. And how many with dependent care accounts are on track to be over 550 currently, or we expect zero? Um, so those are the answers to your questions, Tracy. Unmute the microphone on your cell phone. Star six.
Lynn Murphy has a hand up, too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Now we can.
Okay, so I'm not in support of this because I don't feel that there's been any interruption in typical business for Town employees in reference to why this particular federal exemption is being put in place. Nobody's had, you know, I, I can't see a reason for it, other than, boy, wouldn't that be a nice thing to do? So I personally am not in support of this, um, because I don't feel that there's been an effect to the employees that would speak to the validity of why we would allow this to just become unlimited. So go ahead, Select Person Air.
Um, I wish I could vote on this, but I can't. I didn't have enough time to review it or anything, so I will not cast a vote on it.
It was in your reprint, your printed materials, Dan.
I didn't see it.
It's agenda, it's the last agenda item, on page four, letter D.
Yeah, you were given five days of, um, time to review it, it's the very last page. Go ahead, Vice Chair Knapp.
Mike, I was just gonna say, I, I actually agree with Tracy on this one. Um, it, it's a, it's a real nicety, but I, it's like, we already have a very generous benefits plan as it is, so to overwhack it is, seems just over the top.
If I may, um, just for my own, um, understanding, so the, the processing for the Town is no different, it's, you know, handled by our, um, health insurance provider, there's no cost to the Town. Um, you know, the limits are set by the federal government, they're allowing an extension of these limits. Um, so I guess, what, what does the Town have to lose? It seems like the, the employees have a, uh, stand to benefit, but the Town has, stands to lose nothing. So I'm wondering why there wouldn't be support.
So I'm of the opinion that there's always additional work with FSAs and child-dependent programs, even if you're paying an outside vendor to manage them. And so I feel like by allowing this one-time, unlimited, carry-on forever, this particular year balances, you are creating more work. And I think, and it has been my experience, and when situations like that occur, over time, your historical information gets lost, and I, I just, I don't see the reason for it, and I'm gonna let Select Person Sakoshia weigh in.
Uh, totally echoing what Tracy has to say, and look, Lynn's coming from the Town, and, you know, it's, it's an added, added work. Um, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it, so. I'd like to make-
Select Person Bailey? I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I would like to make a motion not to accept.
Well, well, let's hear from Select Person Bailey.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Jim. The, the reason I'm asking, what happens if the employee, uh, uses all the funds available? What responsibility does the Town have, or how does that work? Because I am not familiar with a spending account on the end when it runs out. I know basically how to use it in between the middle, but what happens if all the funds are used?
So the, the Town pays, the Town pays annually $33 to our health insurance provider to provide these accounts, and so that service fee of $33 funds their processing of the, um, of the, the dispersment of funds. And so an employee is able to put funds in pre-tax up to a certain IRS limit for qualifying expenditures, both for a flexible spending account, typically medical supplies, et cetera, and the dependent care account for childcare payments. And so it's a reimbursement-style system, and so the, once the expenditures are made, eligible expenditures are submitted to our health insurance provider, um, who provide reimbursement after determining the qualification. Um, and so once the funds, you know, once an employee expends the, you know, the, an employee is set asideing, setting aside their funds and then dispersing them, um, and so once they utilize all their funds, uh, they wait until the next plan year.
So it's $33 for each employee, not just for, for the, for our group?
Yes, it's 33 for each employee. Um, the, the fee is waived for employees that are on, uh, preferred health plans, um, and so we don't pay 33 for every employee, depends on their health insurance election.
So, so if they run out of money, they're sorry out of luck? Is that, is that the whole idea, what you're trying to avoid saying? They have no insurance?
Their money.
If they use all the money up?
No, it's their money, so, you know, employees, it's an opportunity to set aside funds for qualifying expenses pre-tax. And so just like a, just, you know, just like a retirement account, um, you know, you put it aside pre-tax and take it out later, these, of the, these accounts allow you to set aside funds pre-tax, which is why the, primarily why the employer is involved, and then it's verified that the expenses are qualifying by, in this case, our health insurance provider through their processing. Um, so no, I mean, they're not out of luck, they just don't have anything additional in that account to put towards eligible expenses.
So this would be used, Select Person Bailey, for instance, if I needed new glasses, or I know that I'm gonna need a crown that's gonna cost me up to $1,000, or my child, you know, needs special dermalogic material for acne breakout that's not covered by insurance, but it is, is an actual health necessity, I could project for a year that I want to put aside up to, say, $500 by putting $25 a week aside pre-tax, save, save, you know, not being taxed on that $500. Um, my only, you know, I, I just, I don't see the reason for it, Connor, it's not that I don't value our employees, I think they're amazing.
No, no, I was just curious.
I'm talking six out of 23 employees that could be affected by this, but we're not sure, and quite frankly, you and I both know with health savings accounts, maybe not dependent care, but with health savings, if you're approaching year-end and you haven't spent that money, get to your optometrist and buy some really cool sunglasses with prescriptions in them, and you'll spend your money. And there's a period of time following the end of the year, I think it's usually 60 days, where you do get to spend- And there's a period of time following the end of the year, I think it's usually 60 days, where you do get to spend the money in that way so that you don't end up coming up short and have, have put money aside that you didn't expend for health purposes. So I just don't agree with this.
No, that's, that's perfectly fine. I understand.
Thank you. All right.
At this time, would anyone like to make a motion on this, or are we closing this portion of the meeting?
I was hoping to speak before the vote. Mrs. Lynn Murphy?
I'm, I'm not sure that that's appropriate, Lynn, but I think you can speak during public comment.
Oh, yeah, wait.
Does anyone need Lynn to speak on this?
I'd, I'd let her speak, Madam Chair. That's my, I'm only one person.
The rest of the board willing to hear from Lynn as an employee of the town?
I'm staying.
I need three.
Yes.
Okay, and Andy?
Fine.
Okay, go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you, everybody. Tracy, I certainly appreciate you looking at it from a point of the work involved. As long as the town continues to offer to maintain an FSA, there, you know, there will be work every month. It's about the same amount of work, whether the funds go back a year or two or their current. Um, the, as a person using the account, I do have to disagree with your perspective that everybody has a chance to use it. This year, I happened to put aside money for three kids that need their wisdom teeth removed due to COVID. The amount of time to have that done and combined with a college schedule does greatly decrease the amount of time when one could schedule such a surgery. So that's my, you know, my employee perspective. As, again, as the HR administrator, I do appreciate you considering the work involved. And there is one other provision, excuse me, from this act that would also allow us to return funds to terminated employees or employees that have been terminated in 2021 that left the town with money in their account.
Do you also, folks, wanna hear, I see John Huckins hand up. Do you also wanna hear from him?
I'd say yes.
I think point of order, we're getting off track.
I, 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 I'm just asking. Do you wanna hear from John?
I'm staying.
I need three. Okay.
John, if John wants to speak, he can speak. We already let one person do it.
Yep, go ahead, John.
Okay, like Lynn, I put extra money away because I was scheduled to have a surgery because I have a high anal hernia and my stomach has twisted up into my chest cavity. My doctor recommended I didn't do it because of the COVID, but that's the reason why I put my extra money into this account. So if I'm not allowed to spend it, what it is, is I'm losing money. And it doesn't really affect the town. Like Lynn said, you, it's the same work for her because you can carry up to, what is it, 500 now anyways? And this is gonna allow you to carry more. So the account still stays open. You're still carrying money. It's just a dollar amount that you're able to carry. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to table this issue until the next meeting, and I would like to get of the six employees, what those figures would look like. De-identified with no information, please. Is everyone else comfortable with that approach?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so motion to table until the next meeting and to come forward with de-identified information. So that. One second, please, select person air, if I could speak. So at, at that point, we'll have a more educated perspective of the impact on this, okay? Okay, go ahead, select person air.
I'd like to thank you because I made a mistake and I didn't review it and I couldn't vote on it because I didn't make a personal mistake. Thank you for allowing this time.
Okay, so at this point, we are moving to the portion of the meeting where select person reports take place. But I have you begin your report out, select person air on the school board. And what's your other committee?
I have not attended school board. We do not have MOU. I feel, I'm not for myself. I have, respect my own personal response, my own reputation and stuff, so I wish we could MOU. And I wish they would allow better access. Thank you. And conservation, we have, we were postponed, nothing on the agenda. And then town lands have been talking. They're having problems with the Zoom, trying to figure that out, but they're working on it.
Okay, select person Bailey, report out.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The only thing I have to report is that ZBA will be Wednesday week coming up for that. And library is tomorrow night, so I have nothing to report. Except for those dates of meetings.
Gotcha. And vice chair now?
Yep, the planning board met last Tuesday. Barrington Shores asked for an extension until, for a month and a half, so I think it's the middle of March. Is when they come back. And we reviewed the Long Shores Drive private road that we voted on this evening. Technology committee is tomorrow, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And I will not be there because tomorrow's my son's birthday and I will still be up north.
Happy birthday, Jameis.
And then, what's that?
Oh, I just said happy birthday, Jameis.
Yep, the big five. So, and then we have the engineering service packets, so I've got lots of white reading to do. And I feel like I'm missing a committee, but that's okay. I think we've covered a lot.
Great. Select person, Pocock?
Okay, the rec department is pretty much same as last week. They have the sweetheart skate this Friday from five to seven. And they're just still planning for programs.
Excellent, thank you. I did not attend, there was no advisory budget committee. And, because we covered all that, delivered it. And I did not attend the meeting of the transfer station because I'm happy to report that day I was moving two clients into permanent housing in my professional role, which is very important to me and certainly hits my heart. So my apologies for missing it. I'm sure we'll have some notes soon. At this time, do we have any need for non-public?
There's one more public comment, but yes, we do have, I do have one quick item for non-public.
I have personnel reputation.
Okay, for, for purposes of personnel and reputation, and then your purpose for non-public, Connor, same thing?
Yes.
Okay, and reputation, thank you. This begins the next 15 minutes, three minutes per person of public comment before we close this meeting. If you would like to speak in public comment, please mouse over your screen. Click on your icon in the upper right-hand corner, press star six on your phone to unmute yourself. You can email the administration at administration@barrington.nhanshore.gov, or you can call 664-0146 as a last desperate attempt to speak if nothing else works. Go ahead, Dan, air, speak as a resident, please.
Uh, Daniel, I am a resident, 334 Old Conter, bike. As a person and stuff. And the hard work that we, I put as a psychopath and stuff, I have comments. Some people like me, dislike me. But they respect me for I take a stand and stuff on my thing. And since the town does not care about my reputation, I will stand on the ground, protect my own personal reputation. And if people don't like it, they can shoot me if they wanna, but bullets don't bother me a bit, so, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Any other public comments? I see Lynn Murphy's hand up. Go ahead, Lynn.
Hi, this comment goes back to the travel policy. I did just wanna make a note that for employees, if they do decide to try to use workers' comp or short-term disability due to COVID, it does still undergo the review process by the insurance company, the specific insurance company, whether it's workers' comp or short-term disability. It's not an automatic, one, you know, one of the COVID push-throughs. So there still is an application with review by an adjuster with signature from a doctor, et cetera.
I'm assuming, Lynn, that summary plan descriptions on those policies would never allow an employee to receive more than 100% of their compensation in order to be absent from work, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Connor, I'm gonna give it 30 seconds and then we will accept the motion to adjourn.
To non-public?
Yeah, motion to enter non-public. Yes, I see nothing additional coming through on my end. There's a couple members on the phone, but nobody that's unmuting.
Very good.
Think we're safe to go over.
7:51 PM, I would make a motion to enter non-public for purposes of personnel and reputation. Do I have a second?
Second.
I heard select person. I'll meet you over in non-public, folks. Let's hope my computer works there.
Roll call vote. Bailey, aye.
Air, aye.
Yeah, aye.
And Hardakon, aye. Yep, meet you over there.